Called order at Irons and City Council meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty-three. With us for invocation tonight, we have Pastor Rick Sturgill with Real Life Ministry. If you would stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, this evening, we thank you, Lord, for this city council meeting. And, Lord, we thank you this evening for these that will just step up and have the courage to lead these meetings. We pray for your blessings on the agenda this evening. We just pray that you would just give wisdom, understanding, patience, help us to listen, and give us courage to speak. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Sturgill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mark.
Clear.
Here.
Hayne.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here. Next on the agenda, we have an approval of minutes from the regular council meeting of June eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the finance committee meeting of June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any edits, additions, omissions to those minutes? Those minutes for standing is approved. Next, on the agenda, we have audience participation. Tonight, we have an invited guest, Mr. Bob McAllister. He's put together a presentation about a solar program that could be beneficial to the city. Mr. McAllister.
Hey, guys. It's great to be here. Thanks for inviting me. Many of you may know me as a high school football coach. I coached a lot of high school out here for a long time, the football coach. Now at Chesapeake, you may know I was a candidate for county commissioner five years ago. That didn't work out. But when I ran, I talked a lot about the opportunity that was coming down the road because of changes in technology, because of changes in the economy related to renewable energy. Well, in the last year, that has changed dramatically. With the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, there are opportunities for towns like Irons and all across America, for the surrounding area, to do a couple of things. And the principal reason here that I'm here tonight is to show you how you can save taxpayer money. How you can use solar in a way where you can start to save money on the first day that it's installed, because of the incredible opportunities brought about by the Inflation Reduction Act. But also, and I'm just going to throw this out real quick, there are extraordinary opportunities for places like this, Mayor Cramble, we've talked a little bit about this before, for revitalizing the manufacturing base here in this area. We actually got an announcement just a few days ago that might be the beginning of something real. And I just want to present that real quick. I promised not to take more than about ten minutes, and I'll get out of your way. Okay? The Inflation Reduction Act was passed last August, and it is, on its surface, a climate change, a bill to deal with the climate crisis. It's the most important law ever passed in the world in that regard. And I do a lot of presentations on the climate change, but that's not why I'm here. It's going to allocate about, it has allocated about three hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars to address this. It is the most important law in this area that's ever been passed. It will probably more be more important than that, because the tax credits that are available in this law for average consumers are going to be so popular that it may end up having even a bigger impact than that. As you'll see, I'm going to show you some ways that you can save money. Just if you look at federal spending, this is the increase in federal spending over the last few years in what we can expect with not just the Inflation Reduction Act, but the Infrastructure Act, the CHIPS Act, and some other things. It's the largest bill ever passed to deal with the climate crisis, but for our purposes tonight, it's going to lower carbon emissions by forty percent. And I think that's a conservative estimate by twenty thirty. But for our purposes tonight, economic benefits, that's what I want you to understand. It can save people in Irons and eighteen hundred dollars a year by twenty thirty, and I think this is conservative, create nine million more jobs in these new industries, and actually reduce our energy expenditures by about fifty billion dollars a year, about four percent, because electrification is that much more efficient. Now, when you talk about private investment, not government investment, not taxpayer money, but private companies, it is capitalism that's going to drive this. Incredible new investments in solar and wind, in carbon capture and sequestration for places where fossil fuels might still be used, like in cement manufacturing, heavy industry that are harder to decarbonize, there are huge incentives to bury that stuff. And I think this is an opportunity that may come in Irons and in this area's way, a new hydrogen economy, where we can produce clean burning hydrogen. When you burn hydrogen, the only byproduct is water. And it can be produced using solar and wind energy. That could be an opportunity for us. And then the consumer technologies are going to be available. The one that everybody sees now are EVs. Guys, I drove in here in an EV. I have solar panels on my house. I got an electric car. I drive on sunbeams. Costs me nothing to drive. My electric bill last month was fifty cents. No kidding. I drive Chesapeake about every day. And new things like heat pumps, all kinds of incredible technologies that are way more, way more efficient. Look at some changes in capital investment. You can see that capital investment is beginning to rise at an extraordinary pace. And if this law is targeted at areas like this, those tax credits, and I'm going to show you that in just a second, for former coal communities, the IRS maps that show that just dropped, this is one. We're in that area. Assistance for rural co-ops, like Buckeye Rule, places like that, to go solar, go wind. Community reinvestments, so you can take old power plants and convert them, already got all the infrastructure, the distributed electricity, convert them into solar farms and wind farms. And incentives, and this is what really excites me, for clean manufacturing, like the electrolyte plant that we just announced the other day. You can see this is happening all over the country. This is new investment. The law passed in August. This is new investment, and this is happening. I'm going to show you here in just a second what's happening in Ohio. Okay, let me show you real quick. I'll show you a couple maps real quick, and then get off. And this is an experiment. We'll see if I can get this to work. I don't quite know how they all paid it back. We'll talk about that in a second. This is just a chart to show you how fast manufacturing investment has ramped up since We are in a manufacturing boom. Just read an article about that today. This is where new investments have been announced since the Inflation Reduction Act. You can see Ohio here, see an awful lot going down into Georgia. These are new facilities. I knew somebody hadn't been over here yet, because it's brand new. New facilities all across Ohio, battery technology, EVs. This is a revolution that's happening, and I want to see us in front of this. That's for you. You guys are more familiar with how things work, you're better connected with the folks in Columbus. I just want you to know that these opportunities are coming, and to put it on your radar. Guys, my dad worked at the Mount Leau. He kills me every time I drive by that house. I mean, it's like a stab in my heart when I see that giant open field where my dad used to work. I don't like that. It kills me when I see that. I want to see that place booming again. Give you an example, that's where the Werther Steel shut down. Thousands of people laid off in the Werther Steubenville area. Just a few days ago, they announced it's going to become a place to produce iron, air, batteries, so wind and solar farms can store energy, so it's one of its companies. And at night, we can still run the drill on the river. Aren't your peppers so amazing? I can show you this, and I don't want to take too much of your time. This is the map that just dropped from the IRS that shows that we are part of a coal community. I don't know if you can see it today. Okay, there's one. Just Coles Mines, adjacent to that, all of this, that's going to matter here in just a second. That map just dropped by the IRS, those folks in those areas are going to get a special tax credit, because they've been hurt by the collapse of the coal industry. This is all driven by, this is all driven by an incredible, this is capitalism, this is technology at work. Government investment in science and R and D has helped some of this, but a lot of this is just about capitalism at work, free markets. It was production in two thousand and two that we'd have one gigawatt, gigawatts, a billion watts of solar power by twenty ten. We exceeded that by seventeen times as much. By twenty thirty-two, we've got two hundred and fifty-two times as much. This is happening so fast. And I want Irons to be a part of this. And why is it happening? You can see coal prices or commodities, they go up and down with supply and demand. Natural gas, same thing. Nuclear's actually going up in cost. Look at what's happened with wind. Look at what's happened to the price of solar. In almost every place in America, it's now the cheapest form of electricity there is. Okay. So what's it got to do with us? Now, I'm going to do this fast, and I'm going to keep you here all night. Some incentives for you and for your constituents, and then I want to talk about the city and what the city can do. EVs. If you buy an EV now, seventy-five-hundred-dollar tax credit. It is designed to encourage people to buy American-made cars. If you, to get the full seventy-five-hundred-dollar tax credit, it has to be assembled in America, and its battery components have to come from the United States of America. If it's not, you only get half as much. It is driving an EV revolution. That's why all those battery plants are going in the United States. That's why a Chinese company put an electrolyte plant, a Dow Chemical. That's why two battery plants have gone in Ohio, been announced in Ohio since August. North Georgia is exploding with them. Four-thousand-dollar tax credit if you buy a new QDV, that's a brand new one. And thirty percent tax credit if you put a fast charger in there. This is just real quick, this is a little bit more complicated. If you want better windows, better doors, insulation, there are tax credits for those. I don't want, you don't have to take notes, I can get all this information to you. If you're redoing your house, you get tax credits. You want to put a heat pump in your house, you can get up to a two-thousand-dollar tax credit for that heat point. It's thirty percent of the cost of that thing. If you have an income less than eighty percent of the area median, this is a smaller program, you got a chance to get the full cost of that pay. And this is true for windows, for doors, for an energy on, for insulation, for new electrical panels. Okay? There's the one I want to mention. This is the biggest reason I'm here. I put solar panels on my house in two thousand and eighteen. Awesome local company called Solar Holler. Holler?
It's a West Virginia company, great people, take out-of-work coal miners and put them to work, putting solar panels on people's houses, on churches, on schools. Great company. They came in and put that on our house, I got a thirty percent tax credit. But here is the problem for cities, for schools, for churches, nonprofits, they don't pay taxes. So they couldn't take, there were complicated ways to do it, that changed with the Inflation Reduction Act. It's called direct pay. If the city of Irons decided to put solar panels on their facilities, thirty percent direct pay off the top. If you live in a disadvantaged community, IRS has already come out with that map, I believe we're all in it, ten percent more. If you come from a former coal community, just showed you the map, that's why I showed you the map, ten percent more. The work at fifty percent off the cost of the system. If you go with a company who sources their materials inside the United States, ten percent more. That's sixty percent. Sixty percent direct pay. Now, there are nuances, I'm sure, but that's basically the way it works. I'm just a little football coach, I don't speak IRS. Okay? This is an opportunity. I think we can kickstart a revolution maybe and start to get this area, this area that we all know, we all love. Guys, I came back here a long time ago because I wanted to help the kids from this area. I had other offers, but this mattered, because this place matters to me. We may differ a little bit on Friday night and fall. Okay? But I love this place. This is where I'm from. And I want to help there. So I hope you can look into this, and I'm going to show you one more thing, I'll go right to the web here real quick. Now, that's the end of that presentation, and I won't be a show for a company. But this is a great local company. I just want to tell you about the people. Probably have a lot of, they have a structure, they will come in, they'll do a satellite analysis, so they can tell you exactly what's rushing through this back. Amazing company, Natalie Young, labor. I talked to the CEO, Ben, and contact, another guy who's off doing incredible things. Came back to West Virginia because he worked on a project, and he was on it too. Okay? That's all I've got, guys. We'll get back to your reading. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Anything I can, like I said, I don't speak IRS.
Is there a way that you could send us a PowerPoint from these links?
I'm not allowed to share that PowerPoint. That comes from the organization Climate Reality. I will come to your office, come to your house, and go through it. You want to take notes? Okay? I can do that, but the PowerPoint's copyrighted, thank you.
Got it. Question. Now, okay, let's say, I mean, you've been around the building.
Yeah.
How can we fit enough, like, on our roof to supply all the energy for, let's say, just the city building?
Yeah, I, there are limits on net metering.
Yeah.
So I, a lot depends on the time of the year. Is your roof oriented right? Yeah, I think your roof oriented right. You want a south-facing roof. I think you've got real potential here. On this city building, you would have to talk to the experts. They can tell you. I would think you could generate an awful lot of power from this roof. You got a pretty big roof up there. I guarantee it would dramatically reduce your costs. I can tell you what my electric bill's like.
Yeah.
Okay? My, now, I just got a little old ranch house out on ninety-three. We'll have about six months a year where I have single-digit electric bills. And remember, I have an electric car, and I charge my car a dollar. So that's my gas costs, and my heating, cooling, and all that kind of stuff. You also can talk to them, there are microgrids and stuff, they're such amazing, I got a really good friend named Michael Benson, who knows how to set up microgrids, and this is extraordinary stuff. Solar Holler can do that kind of stuff too. Yes?
When you say meter limit, you're talking about, they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to tell us that we're completely off the grid, we have to depend on the grid.
We're tied into the grid. Net metering is, there are days when you generate more power than you can use. You get in the summer, you get this time of year, you get a sunny day, I'll produce, just in my little house, forty-five kilowatt hours. I don't use anything near that. What happens is, basically, your meter runs back. You're selling electricity back to the grid. There are limits on that in Ohio. Our state legislature at times is, utilities have a lot of power up there. I don't want to go any further. We've had a big scandal about that. But I know from my experience, even in the worst, is in the dead of winter, when we run into the furnace, which I will replace with a heat pump as soon as I can, as soon as, wife won't let me do it until the furnace stops. But I will replace it with a heat pump, which is an air conditioner and the furnace. Even at the height of winter, usually thirty-five, forty dollars a month. And that's, like I said, with an electric car. Everybody's paying five dollars a gallon for gas. It's way, the gas gets cheaper all the time. I can stop and get a can of coffee.
What would you say would be a ballpark figure for, let's say, a building this size? Have you been by the new city garage?
Where is it?
This Dog, Walhams building?
Oh, yes, I have.
Asked about, can you give us any type of ballpark without the direct pay?
You're way beyond my technical, but I'll tell you what it cost in my house. It was twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars with the tax credit. It cost me, I got about an eight-thousand-dollar tax credit, seventy-nine-hundred, seventy-five. Paid it off in three years. We started saving money the first day of summer. I was saying that even, we got it in October, I actually called Dan Hummott, the CEO of Solar Holler, and said, you're saving about fifty dollars a month right now. And that was as soon as I installed it, and I was still paying on the loan, we paid it off in three years.
Is there, let's say, we reach out to this solar company, decide to move forward with, you know, whatever building, what would we have to do as a city to, I guess, register for these savings? Or is it sixty percent total?
Now, the direct pay is so different than what I did. I would want, I would, you should talk to them about how, to the company, you should talk to them.
So we've been planning and stuff, we haven't worked with any brokers yet.
Yeah.
So we've got, you know, compensation, install, looking at alternative sources, price cost, they have to choose. I do know that, I think they're looking at, 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 they're looking at,
And I can talk to some folks and find out.
We're ready. We have the engineers kind of specing. Some of the things that we're going to...
It sounds like the mayor's already working on this. I'm interested in it. If it's going to save us money for generations, then, you know, or decades, whatever, you know, I can support this. But I think everybody's kind of on board and see what we can do. So, I appreciate your time. I appreciate you coming in and giving us this information, Mr. McCollough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along. Any other audience participation? If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Nobody else? This is my turn. Didn't print enough for you guys. I'm sorry, but what I'd like to do is for you guys to share, you just reference, so you can see what I'm saying. I'm James Gordon. Resident in the riverfront. Actually sleep at eight fifteen South Seventh Street. What I'm looking at here, what I want to talk to you guys about today is the six fifty pond that's right next to, of course, six fifty and fifty-two. Did some research on that pond, okay? And I've looked at it for years and years, and I realized, man, that is a heck of a recreational opportunity. It's a pond in the city. It's safe. It's accessible. It's kind of dirty. It's got a lot of litter. It's got a lot of grown-up weeds and things going on there. But I'm into creating fishing accesses and making fishing accessible for all. And what I'd like for the city to do is, I would like the city to assume ownership. And what you're looking at is those undetermined parcels there. Do you see the other number? There's only one parcel on that pond that has indicated that it's owned by the city. And it's the weirdest cut of... It's not land, it's water. Do you see the triangle that I'm referring to? Okay. Do you see all the other parcels that I'm referring to? There should be five highlighted there. Of course, yours is not going to be highlighted. But what I'd like to do is, I'd like for the city to look into, see who actually owns that property. Would you like to own that property as a city and then assume stewardship, of course, as a volunteer effort, to clean that property up and make it accessible for people?
Craig?
Hey, James, I know exactly what you're talking about. It looks like the only real issue would be that the village of Hanging Rock owns the access to the access road that you turn to, that you can either go on down to the horse park or that you can go to the pond. They own the access. So, we'd have to...
See, they don't actually own that road. They just own that portion that's right there leading to the pond where all the cattails are.
Oh, I see. You got...
You see that road there that's coming down?
Yeah.
See, no one owns that. And there's space in between the actual property owners and other people. So, just creating efficient access there is not going to create any bearing on anybody's privacy. It's not going to disrespect anybody's land. Matter of fact, they're probably going to love the fact that somebody's going to come in there and clean up the garbage, clean up the mess, and make it more accessible. What I'm asking for the city to do today is just to look into it for me, to see if we actually own it. And if we do, I can come back to you guys and just request that you allow me to go in there and, you know, do my volunteer effort to organize cleanup again. And then ultimately, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have that pond stocked, but I'll take care of that. I'm not asking for any money. Not really asking for a whole lot of assistance, other than logistics, trash, and things of that nature. But first and foremost, what we need to do is, we need to address the fact that these are undetermined parcels. I've already been in the contact with Julie at the auditor's office. I've already talked to Paul at the auditor's office. They say that we need to do a title search on that property in order to determine it. So, I'm coming to you guys today because I'm sure that you guys have the expertise to deal with that.
Mr. Gordon, I... Which I used to fish there, but, man, that one spot that you can only reach gets fished out. You know, you can't catch...
Well, and this is the problem, too, because once you allow me to assume stewardship of that property, we can get ODNR involved.
Yeah.
I can get Mathias from Wildlife involved to the Ranger District. We can get some of that stuff dredged and some of those cattails pulled out and deepen that backside of that pond so that pond doesn't flip annually if we do decide to stock it, which I hope we do.
Craig?
Are you going to take the picnic table that's floating in the front of it out?
Maybe. I will make it look a little different. I'm going to do my very best. I mean, it's in my heart, it's my desire to improve every recreational opportunity, like, every recreational area that we have, especially the things in nature.
I get it. That's a great opportunity. Now, it may be tricky, but what I can promise is, I'll send what you have to our solicitors and have them look into, if we can. Now, that's a... My... I don't know. Like I said, they can probably do the title search themselves, I would say, wouldn't you think? And then we can go from there. But, yeah, like you said, it'd be a great opportunity.
I mean, it'd just be super nice, man. And I mean, if you really look at the space where the homeownership is, it's not going to interfere with anybody's privacy, with anybody's land, or there shouldn't be any transpassing at all. You know what I mean?
Right.
The access is right here off of six fifty, there's no problem. The city of Ironton actually owns the backside of the pond that's cut off.
Well, that's what I was looking at. That's kind of weird.
We own all those parcels, but nothing else. It's like, we own everything surrounding it, but not the parcels that have been undetermined. So, I would just like you guys to look at that.
I'll get with our solicitors, and I'll try to get you an answer as soon as possible.
Man, I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you so much.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Do you know, who owns the RV that's there, the Camber with the...
The individuals who own the horse park, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's where their property stops at, is where that RV is at.
Yeah, okay.
James, are you telling me the RV that's kind of without a rental?
It's like the one, you know, the horse park is sitting there, then there's a RV that sits there.
That's a white Jeep.
Okay. Yeah, that's the man who owns the property there, too. He owns, another dealership owns the property there. I didn't want to mention any names because I don't want to...
That's a fair... I got you. Mike?
Mr. Gordon, I've lived in that part of town for years and years and years, and I'm very familiar with that pond. It was dredged at one time back in the sixties and cleaned out, and then, I think with an intent of what you have now, but they never followed through with it.
I intend to try.
It filled back up. I've caught more sunfish out of that pond than I could count.
That's why I can't catch anything like that.
That's right.
Well, there's crappie in there, too, and you'd be surprised at how nice that pond really is. I doubt that many people walked around it. I walked around it twice at the beginning of this year. The amount of trash and the amount of saplings is so dense. It's not really safe to go in there.
Well, if you carry through with what you're thinking about here, it would almost be a service because that, the south end of that pond is, that's just a mosquito haven. It is swampy up in there, and it's just a breeding ground for mosquitoes and insects. And so, it sounds like a real...
I'm hoping to get some resolve by the end of the fall so we can start. Because there's no way I can attack it in the spring and summer. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, that's right.
I get ate up.
I, like I said, we'll, if we have to do it as council or whatever, I'll just, I'll scan this myself and email to them and have them kind of look into it and see what we can do and try to get you an answer as soon as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This graph is just off the auditor's side office.
Right.
So, anybody can look up if you want to see it in color and get more definition.
That's interesting.
I have you ink in my printer, so I have to go to the library real quick. Appreciate your time.
Good deal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other audience participation?
Number Gary Prager, twenty-two twenty-two South Wall Street. We came to the last meeting and talked to you about the property next door to where we live, where we purchased the lot from Gary Morrison. I really just wanted to clarify a couple of things, but Brimman's not here, so I don't know if we can or not. Because he had mentioned that the property wouldn't necessarily go to us if it's vacated, but everybody else tells us that it will. So, I don't know if we have some misunderstanding there or what the situation is. But we also wanted to make it clear, we don't want the street. We, from the property line that we purchased to the street, to where the blacktop starts, there's twenty-three feet of grass right there. That's a very large section of grass, you know? And we really just want, I think we measured it out, fifteen feet. That would still leave eight feet between there and where the street is. And I guess, really, it's more of an alley. I don't know that anybody really considers it a street anymore. And if you look on the auditor's website on the pictures, it actually shows Joan Street ending at Fourth Street. It doesn't even show Joan Street right there. So...
That is a... Questions. Nate?
Did you file what you need to with the mayor?
Well, I have it here because it says we have to give it to a city council meeting, or a city council member that has to get it from there. So, I do have the application here.
Jacob, do you want to accept that and hand it to the mayor? Or Nate, do you want to look at it?
I'd like to take a look at it, and then...
Then from the mayor, that'll come to PUC.
Yes.
Do you have, does it need a couple of minutes or...
No, not till it goes to what you say.
Yeah. We'll set them, we'll get the mayor. The mayor...
Wait, like a motion you accept it?
No.
You were mentioning, you don't know about the vacation of it? I've been around here for a long time. We vacate a lot of crosshairs. So, one speculation that, we vacate an alley, then this half alley goes to that property, and that goes to that property, for sure. I mean, that's the way it's been for the last thirty-five years.
Adjacent property.
Yeah, the adjacent property. I think the big problem we have with that property, because I looked at it when Gary was talking about, you know, in something with, is that, I've talked with a couple of the city people, but we have never in the history vacated a sidewalk. And I think that is the biggest problem that you're dealing with, is that alleys is done old. Well, there's not a lot of them to vacate now, but a few years ago, there were a bunch of them.
Because there's not a sidewalk between your alley, your property and where the alley is. So, I get that.
But the vacating sidewalk, you know, there's not a sidewalk there. It's totally different. And I've seen people in the town that actually pour up their sidewalk and plant it all in grass. And, you know, that's not permitted use.
Right.
I've seen it done. But I don't see any reason why we can't vacate it and that property become part of your adjacent property. It wasn't. We've already checked for utilities, are there utilities there? You know, it's just an empty lot, one of these. And I think we should get it vacated for each side of the yard. Are you going to fence it off like outside your house is now?
Yeah, we want to build a garage and then fence off the yard.
But I'm all for it.
Nate, you probably... Yeah, no, I was going to kind of echo what Bob said. I'd like to go ahead and sponsor legislation for the vacation of it and give a recommendation.
Please say your recommendation.
Just to go ahead and get, just to get it rolling.
Sure.
Roll it on. So, I'd be happy to sponsor that. And then we can give a recommendation of what we see.
I may not be, I wish I said I may not be here next meeting.
At least we'll get it, at least we'll get it rolling.
Okay.
Same thing. I'll, you know, bring him. I'll sponsor. Anybody else would like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor, too. One question I have, because Bob mentioned the sidewalk. And I've seen this happen before, that dirt, grass take over the sidewalks. Have you guys done any digging where the sidewalk possibly could be?
No, but I've lived, I grew up in the house next door. I've lived on that block since I was a year old. I don't remember there ever being a sidewalk there. There used to be some gravel next to the road, that I, next to the street, that I think the grass has kind of taken over. But I don't remember there ever being a sidewalk there.
You guys see, I pulled up one here. It's this middle one that's outlined. If you look at, we vacate half of each case property over here, right? So, they've wired this one here, twelve hundred. This is the property, question in the middle. We actually own the property adjacent on that side, so we still have that street alleyway.
So, do we get, does the city get like an easement through there?
It's because we're the owners, and it goes to each... So, when you vacate an alley, half the alley goes to the person on this side, half of it goes to the other side. The parcel. So, like, on this one here, you know, where that street line is somewhere in there, about half of that parcel, see? So, half of it's going to go to the person here, which then the other half would go here, which is us.
Oh. Well, let me ask you this, like, is...
We don't have any utilities in there.
Well, not that. Like, could you, I mean, like, I'm not saying you guys want to block off the street, but like, if a property owner wanted to, could they block that, which I guess is an alley or whatever? Could they block access to that?
It's going to be out of there.
That's, yeah, that's the only thing I had a question about.
Yeah, but really, all we want is the fifteen feet. Right, there's still grass there.
Good deal.
Yeah, because honestly, if we block off the whole street, then where we live next door, we would block access to our garage that we have now. We'd have to go up down the street to get to it.
I wouldn't think you guys would do that, but I just, for future reference, I didn't know if, I don't want to, you know, it was just a question, like...
And I just wanted to clarify one other thing. I think we kind of got caught up last time on adjacent and it being people across the street and different things. The application actually says abutting, which means you share a boundary. Adjacent is just nearby, so it would be people across the street. But the application is just abutting neighbors.
Gotcha.
So, in this case, the mayor was right, it would just be us and the city, so...
Chris?
So, this is probably a question for the Andersons, but is this a situation that we could write some language in that says, while this family owns it and at the point that this family doesn't own it, then it reverses back to the city?
I don't think he's wanting to do that.
Give us that buffer to ensure that three generations down the line, it's owned by somebody else, and they just decide to do something completely different with it?
I don't know. It's vacant, it's permanent.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was kind of another question we had, is, does it just add on to that lot that we already purchased and make that lot bigger, or does it get its own parcel?
You would have, if you would have its own parcel, you would have to have it remain in your, when you're...
No. Well, I know, I do know this because I was looking at this, actually, my own house. I've got some sliver of land behind my, in like my backyard that's not in, it's weird. But, and they've told me that you go and you sign a form, kind of like a petition, to combine those parcels. And they can, you can do that at the courthouse and the auditor's office. Reassessed or something like that.
So, do they start by, you know, put weed in that sort of thing?
Yeah.
And you guys would just sign off on whatever, and then we would take care of that part of it?
Right, yes, yes, yes. So, hopefully, now the mayor's got us, it'll come to us, we'll set up PUC, and then it should get on the next agenda.
Okay.
So...
For us to find it, do we need to be here for that? Would we notify?
Can if you want, but I would say there's, they usually send a letter in mail.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can be here if you want to, no problem.
You can subscribe, you can subscribe and watch it on YouTube.
You see him quite often.
Yeah, I've cut one on there. It adds, you can subscribe and watch it on YouTube. That adds to our users.
Oh, yeah.
And ups our viewers so we can get free streaming YouTube.
There you go.
But I think after the mayor gives it to us, we'll take care of it and send it along to you.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other audience participation? I'm seeing none. Moving on to communications. We have communication from the higher division of liquor control. Quick stop to, another quick stop. Craig?
Motion to request no hearing.
Jacob?
Second.
We have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to request no hearing. Roll call, please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
There'll be no hearing on this liquor license. Moving along to reports, there are none. Moving along to ordinances. Marty, would you please give a first reading to ordinance twenty-three forty?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
Yeah, on ordinance twenty-three forty, we give favorable recommendation that our finance committee, you know, like, suspend the rules. They give twenty-three forty third, second, third reading by either holding the possible...
Jacob?
I'll second that.
Having a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three forty. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three forty. Marty, would you please give ordinance twenty-three forty segment, third reading?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, and declaring an emergency, second reading. Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three forty.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
Having a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-three forty, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three forty has been adopted. Moving along to ordinance twenty-three forty-three, would you please give that first reading?
Authorizing the sale of Memorial Hall and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
Yeah, um, I would not support giving the second, third reading today, but I would like to talk about some amendments to it. Because I don't want getting involved in like, we have other lots in the city, other pieces of parcels, where we kind of give it away almost and then we're developing and nothing ever happens. And we can't get it back. But I think that this thing, originally, I didn't think of favor, being favor of the law, but I read it, read it, and I would be, but I think there's a twenty-four month clause in here that says it has to be developed in twenty-four months. And I think we add to that if it's not, that we do a reversionary clause so that it comes back to the city. So we want it to protect us, uh, I mean, if somebody is eighty-five percent done with it, then be it that's either force out or, or just not, but, you know, I just don't want somebody buying it to gun it out. And me and Craig had talked about, oh, that sandstone has a lot of value to it.
Does.
And we think that, and I'm speaking for us, that, uh, you know, somebody may bid, or may bid some past a number of figures, so they can tear it down and gut it and sell the stuff out of it. So I also think we should have, the city council should have, a chance to see the plans for the remodeling. And if it looks like they're going to tear it down, then we can stop it.
So would you, are you talking about, you know, should, you're wanting to amend this, right? The way it stands?
Yeah, to amend it.
So you're wanting to amend section four to state that, um, if construction is not complete, it reverts back to the city, correct?
Yeah, reversionary clause, it automatically comes back to the city.
Construction. And also, so you want to add a section seven to this, correct?
Right. To say that we get a chance to look at the plans, what they're going to do.
So do you?
And we would approve or disapprove.
Are you, are you wanting to, so do you want the structure remaining that's there, correct? Craig?
I don't want particularly for it to remain, but I want to see what their intent is. If the intent is to move in and start taking it apart, disassemble it, and then they quit, give it back to the city, I don't want to see that happen.
Okay, Craig?
I, I agree with Bob, but I think it's, that section would be unnecessary because they have to file building permits in, in the mayor's office.
Okay.
It was a reason that the deed would have the reversion clause, because that's required by the, what, what might have been. Just because they win the bid doesn't mean that's a contract. The deed is an actual option, that would be, like, I think when you put it in there, when Greg said that was okay, that was to cover, then your stipulation would be authorize me to do this, or these, right?
I mean, I, I want.
The deed, Brigham, they will put the deed together, it has to include these things, and.
I don't think, I, again, we, we depend on what he, on what the Andersons say, but I, we've passed legislation in, in the past that's had reversionary clause language in it, so I, I mean, I don't think it hurts to put.
So did it have the contract already, the?
No.
Okay, the scene, this just authorizes it, you would also still have to allow me to accept it.
They have building plans.
Most of us here probably remembers the school building that they couldn't get plans for. And then they did, and then they didn't, and they're under construction right now, and I noticed in the thing, they got a big split in the building. I mean, so if you got the plans, then what happens is the state comes in and says, oh, that's a state project, we'll decide the plans.
Uh, this is just for the ownership, I think, to take ownership of the property. And that's what the owner's rights are, is that we have a preferred clause that if they violate, if we take the property. And, uh, that would have to do with building permits, right? I think as far as plans, that's where it goes, the lowest best bid, you know, it's a lot lower, but they're producing twenty-five or more now. That's a better bid, I would think.
So I'm, you know, I just will make sure that, because like I said originally, I was, I was going to be totally against seller. Because it's got a lot of history at that building now. And, but I just, you know, I think we should see the plans, and the council should okay. Even though there'll be state plans, local plans, wherever they come from, that we have the right to see the plans and give our blessing or not.
Do you want to add that in, in amending this, or do you think it's necessary?
Well, it's like, you know, it, I, I would, if we've been in the looking for plans, maybe should be another, another line.
Section?
Yeah, another section.
So we'll put section seven, um, council.
We can see what everybody else is thinking.
Chris, first, Mike, and then Nate, and then Jacob.
I agree with just about everything that Bob has said. Uh, the other thing that we need to, uh, keep in mind is, this is potentially an Ohio historical society property. I mean, this, this, this was, uh, this was a prison during the Civil War. There's a, there's a, if anybody's gotten in there and crawled around, there's a white placard type thing that's got, Society of Women's Nursing Support Act, I can't tell you exactly what it says, but it's something along those lines that, you know, if somebody just comes in with heavy equipment and just bulldozes it, the state of Ohio's lost a tremendous piece of history. So if, you know, however this whole thing transpires, if that thing is removed, the sandstone is stored someplace, you know, in city limits that we have access to, you know, build something else with it, sell with it, whatever. I just, I agree, I think I understand exactly what Bob's saying. If we just seal it all under, that's, that's wholly irresponsible of us. So I think we just need to be very careful how we trade.
Mike?
I agree with, with Bob, I, and however it's done, and probably it might be wise to do both, have it in the ordinance and then, uh, the other method through, uh, the deed, yeah. Uh, my concern, and that's a good point, Mr. Perry, uh, about historical society. But, um, I don't, I don't want something there, we sell it to somebody or a company and they put up a pole building and park dumpsters underneath it. That's the center of our town almost, and, you know, I, I want something nice there. So I, I agree, we should approve plans for renovation there.
I do want to point out before we get any further into this, that it is in the central business districts, and Nate?
Uh, I just kind of want to echo this, as far as having something in there to say, you know, if required to preserve the historical character of the building, blah, blah, blah. But I also maybe like to see, instead of making amendments on the floor to this existing, maybe rewrite it with those. Get the info, then we can review it and do that. I know that's going to set it back. But I just think it might be better to do ourselves. But the consensus is that, the consensus is we want to make the amendments on the floor and do it, okay, but that's just a suggestion.
I got you. Jacob's on Chris.
I, I agree with Bob, um, and I echo your concern with making amendments on the floor. I feel like without council here, maybe it would be better to wait until we can have one more reading of this. And I'm wondering if it might be a good idea to defer this to a committee, um, to maybe discuss the particulars a little bit more and then invite council there too, so we can make sure that we're thoughtful. I'm very.
I would say strategic planning.
Whatever, he's the chair.
Exactly, strategic planning, man. So, I, and like I said, I'm, I, I completely agree. I talked to Bob, uh, yesterday, um, specifically about this, because I want to see it, um, I want to see it remain historic, historical and significant and, and, you know, have that feel to it also. Um, and I'm okay with that, I just want to get this right, and I want to, it's been sitting there far too long. And I just wanted to get this, I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I just wanted to get the ball rolling on this property. Chris?
Two, real quick, I'll defer the whole thing to Jacob, uh, strategic, but if it helps at all, uh, we can enter this together with commercial and industrial since it is, you mentioned it being a business district. So, right, and so, I mean, I, I would let you spearhead the whole thing, but, uh, I could bring my committee along. Mayor, can you tell me, or can you tell us, uh, whoever it is that's bidding, are they, are you involved? Oh.
We haven't even, it's not even up for bid.
My apologies.
Yeah, this was, so typically when we do this, it's either I put it out and then you have to accept it, or you authorize me to do it, but if we're going to do it, authorize me to do it, then you approve it also. I mean, I'm just an ass to it at this point.
My reason for asking, I don't know if anybody else is, I don't know if anybody else has seen, uh, the mockup that Bill Dickens has had, or Bob may have, uh, turning it into a city park. Backfilling it, raising it, uh, keeping the, you know, keeping the facade, then it becomes a viable city property that could potentially really tie into this travel and tourism thing that the county has thrown a bunch of money. I mean, state and county is really trying to get that off the ground. A venue for weddings and parties and proms and all that good stuff. I can get that from Bill, uh, by the next meeting and share with you guys, it's, it's pretty cool looking, whoever made that rendition, but just wanted to mention that.
That sounds great. Um, but it, it's my understanding that it's set dormant for about fifteen years. There've been a few flowers planted, but if action were going to be taken, I would have thought in fifteen years they would not.
I think it's been over fifteen years, and. Craig?
I, I think it's the consensus of, of the council to make sure that, I, to make sure that we preserve some of the historical significance of it. The, the sandstone foundation, the placards that are there, because in addition to the jail, there's also, the reason it's called Veterans Memorial Hall is because there's a placard that, in the old entrance way, that it was dedicated to, to the veterans of the city of Ironton. Um, so, and we know what that means to this town for sure. So I, I think, I, I think that if, if we authorize Sam to bid that out, I, I think he knows that, whatever, whoever bids on it is going to have to go along with his constraints, or that's never going to pass through this, through this body. I just don't want to, I don't want to handcuff him if, if he can bring a, a nice new place that brings twenty-five jobs. I, I don't want to handcuff him at the same time. I, I think he hears us loud and clear, and I don't want to handcuff him in the bidding process.
Right, I, I, like I said, I, I want it, I want it to be usable, I want people to enjoy it, or work, you know, I want people to go in and visit. Like, that's, that's why, that's the only reason why I just put together, and I just, you know, I just sat for too long. And I didn't realize we were going to get this much conversation about this, we could have called it committee meeting. Um, but like I said, I, I, I believe, you know, I've talked to the mayor about it, you know, what can we put in there, how can we keep it? Can they tie in their, their blueprints with what we have existing, dah, 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 you know? Um, but like I said, I'm glad we're having this conversation, um, but I, I agree with you, Craig. Bob?
Yeah, I think, like we ever said, we need, right, we want to do ordinance, probably ought to do these stipulations.
Well, I think, I think everything's good, except we're going to, we're, I, and if you want to, if you just want to add in section four, do you want, uh, email me, I, I've got the note for section four, and if you want to add section seven to, um, state something like, uh, council reserve, council and the mayor reserve the rights to ensure, um, historical, um, significance and, and, I, some, you know, we'll word it however we want to. So just send that to me, I'll get this back to Brigham, and then, um, we'll get it back on the agenda. Okay?
For what's Department, we're talking about how long it's been set empty. My first year on the city council, that's where I have a meeting, the rural third, second, third floor of that building. And.
Hundred and fifty, two years ago.
Those eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety-seven.
But it, um, yeah, I mean, that's where, that's where City Hall was, I mean, we had our council meeting.
Was that right after they let the veteran soldiers out?
I don't know, I mean, that was a long time ago, probably thirty, thirty-five years ago. But we was only there one year.
Yeah.
And then I moved, uh, well, we were renovating this building, moved into here. And, uh, me and Jim Portis had worked on this. And, well, we did do building, we can't renovate for all, it's just janitors, I didn't do that.
Right.
But anyway, um, I think, I think Johnny had a told my old council desk, I said that on the next floor. That he saw the council desk from that building.
You didn't shut that out the window when we had the.
I, and had historical significance, but that's additional.
That's right. Um, Bob, I agree, and I'll get with you, the, the one reason why I don't want to, to do a whole new ordinance is because due to the time constraints, you know, we've already given the first reading, we'd have to get, we'd have to let this die, and then push it out, and on the restore, talk about months, you know, same old. If, I'll get with you, we'll, we'll make the proper amendments and then present them at the next meeting with those amendments. Is everybody good with that? Okay.
Well, sadly, did what they were saying, except you wouldn't just write something out, call me, Mark, and make it.
Okay, I will, we'll definitely do that.
Okay.
All right, moving on to ordinance twenty-three forty-five, Marty, would you please give that first reading?
Establishing a short-term rental slash Airbnb tax and declaring an emergency first reading.
Craig?
I don't see why we should waste it, unless there's other discussion, I don't see why, we, we had this on legislation before, we discussed it, and these are the changes, like adding short-term rental in the vision and, and adding the, uh, the extra three percent that the county usually would take to our, to our customers. I, I don't see any reason to wait unless there's discussion, because we've already discussed this.
I, I agree. Uh, one thing I do want to state, that John's concerns were collection. I've, I've researched and I went on Airbnb, so what we're going to have to do is basically contact them and say, listen, we're, we're starting to get Airbnb, this is the city of Ironton, start to get some Airbnbs in our area. Now, we may have to do this with each individual, like BBRO, and, you know, you basically reach out to the company and then set it up to where they collect on their end, then we, we collect. So I'm going to get with John, and that was one question he had. But everything else, like you said, I think we, uh, I think I addressed every, all the other concerns in the previous legislation.
How many do we have?
We have one, I think we have two now. Um, we had one when, when this very first came on, and I think we have a second one now. I can't, I can't picture where it's at, but I don't know, it may, it's saying it's in Ironton, but it may be in a, in a, you know, in an Ironton area code, but. Craig?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-three forty-five second, third reading by title only.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three forty-five, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three forty-five, Marty, would you please give ordinance twenty-three forty-five second and third reading?
Establish, establishing a short-term rental slash Airbnb tax and declaring an emergency second reading. Establishing a short-term rental slash Airbnb tax and declaring an emergency third reading.
Craig?
Move to adopt ordinance twenty-three thirty-five.
Jacob?
Second.
We have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-three forty-five, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three forty-five has been adopted, moving along to ordinance twenty-three forty-six, would you please give that first reading?
Establishing the Ironton Economic Development Forgivable Loan Application and Declaring an Emergency, first reading.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, suspend the rules to give ordinance twenty-three forty-six second and third reading by title only. Uh, what option?
I'm sorry.
Was, am I got the discussion, or?
I'd just like to bring up that, uh, ordinance twenty-three forty-six is getting favorable application by finance.
Bob, or Chris?
I'd second.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three forty-six. Craig, sorry.
Does the, uh, the lang, does the language in section three suffice for the, um, for the mayor to establish some kind of parameters or committee to look to review the applications?
Okay, that was the discussion, when I was working on this, I, I wanted this out of council's hands, I wanted council to be able to, to provide this type of offering, but I didn't want any, um, any members of council to have to sit on a board or anything like that. So it's up to the mayor, or the mayor's discretion, uh, as a, as a board. And he and Mayor Correct, you and, and whoever you would want to score this, they're, they have a scoring criteria that they will use to score, uh, applications, um, kind of scores them in terms of jobs, uh, jobs created, you know, different, different areas that the mayor or the mayor's designate or designees, uh, would use to score these applications.
So is that section, okay, the, that language, that's, that's really what I was asking, is that?
Yeah, it doesn't have the degree.
Thank you, yeah, okay, that's all, sorry.
Motion by Bob and a second by Chris to suspend the rules, uh, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three forty-six, Martha, would you please give it second and third reading?
Establishing the Ironton Economic Development Forgivable Loan Application and Declaring an Emergency, second reading. Establishing the Ironton Economic Development Forgivable Loan Application and Declaring an Emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Move to the bottom, uh, ordinance twenty-three forty-six.
Jacob?
Uh, second that.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-three forty-six, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein. Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three forty-six has been adopted, moving along to resolutions, Martha, would you please give resolution twenty-three forty-one reading?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement and declaring an emergency.
Nate?
I would like to make, uh, resolution twenty-three forty-one, to give favorable application to finance committee. First to pass, uh, resolution twenty-three forty-one.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Nate and a second by Jacob to pass resolution twenty-three forty-one, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three forty-one has passed, moving on to resolution number twenty-three forty-two, would you please give that reading?
A resolution authorizing the city of Ironton to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city council for design and construction of Bapham Lane and Wychard Street sewer improvements and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
Bob?
Make the motion, we pass ordinance, uh, resolution twenty-three forty-two.
Mike?
Second, and, uh, mentioned that it was also favorably recommended by finance.
Is that what you did?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to, or, I'm sorry, I was pointing at you, I just didn't see.
Mike.
Motion by Bob and a second by Mike to, uh, pass resolution twenty-three forty-two.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three forty-two has passed, I'm glad we didn't have to give that second reading.
Me too.
Uh, moving along to resolution twenty-three forty-four, would you please give that reading?
Authorizing the mayor to accept bids for the sale of the city-owned VAC truck and declaring an emergency.
Bob?
Make motion to pass resolution twenty-three forty-four.
Jacob?
I'd like to make a mention that, uh, resolution twenty-three forty-four is being greatly recommended by finance committee, I'd like to second that.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to pass resolution twenty-three forty-four, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, resolution twenty-three forty-four has passed, um, Craig?
I was like, I need to second this one.
Moving along to miscellaneous, Craig?
I'd like to make mention of, um, of the Chief Johnson memo to us regarding, um, issues at North Third and Union Street and, um, it and the city of Ironton May twenty-twenty-three financials, uh, filed, make part of the minutes tonight.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to make part of the minutes, the letter and the information from Chief Johnson and the.
May.
May financials, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Those will be made part of the council minutes, Jacob?
There's no other discussion.
Mike?
Um, uh, to meet public, um, mandate, I'd like to go ahead and call the PUC meeting for July thirteenth at five fifteen with the purpose to discuss, uh, vacation of the alley.
Uh, so, what is it?
Next meeting.
Forty-five minutes, you think, we knew that must have.
Well, I just didn't know what might transpire.
Well, I'm, I, like I said, I may not be here, so you're calling PUC at, uh, seven thirteen twenty-three, five, five fifteen, did you say?
Seven, yeah, thirteen, uh, at five fifteen, five fifteen.
Seven thirteen twenty-three, five fifteen, council chambers. Uh, and the discussion is the, uh, vacating of the alley on Fourth Street. Craig?
Can I piggyback onto your agenda?
Yes.
I don't think, I, I think you'll be sitting here for forty-three minutes, um, but instead of doing that, maybe add into that, um, ERU discussion as well.
Do that.
Discuss ERUs. Hopefully, because I may not be able to make that one, but I'd like to be here for that one. Um, any other miscellaneous? I've got one, uh, completion of the H Street Park, I think it looks really good, um, we are, I have talked to Brett Thomas about getting, uh, water fountain in there, and there was a water fountain, he said that it shouldn't be hard, uh, to put a water fountain in the H Street Park renovation, so kids can, uh, play hard and then get them a drink, so that's all, that should be a good addition to that. Hopefully, everybody loves that part. Any other miscellaneous, Jacob?
Make a motion to enter the executive session to discuss personnel with council, mayor, and finance director with no action to follow.
Second.
I have a motion by Jacob and a second by Mike to enter executive sc, session with no action to follow, what was?
Uh, council, mayor, and John, personnel.
Personnel. Mark.
And Mark.
And Mark.
And no more than five minutes.
No, I agree with that, I just. I have a motion by Jacob and a second by Mike to enter executive session regarding personnel, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
We are now entering executive session, thank you everybody for attending the night's meeting, we appreciate you.